Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. We're opening up the regular session. For August, is it the 4th? 3rd, August 3rd, 2022. And, Melanie, are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, I have one addition, actually two, excuse me, OHA agreement 169518-6 in Lake Health District ASA variation. And two deletions, the GIS position and guardianship IDA, oh, also the personal property tax order is a deletion too.
Okay. Um, let's go ahead then and take care of OHA agreement 169518-6. And when we've now started, just remind everybody that this is being recorded. We had discussion about this in work session yesterday.
Just in the fact that there's some changes in how the dollars are being rolled over, unspent dollars are being rolled over to the next fiscal year. That's what it appears to be.
No additional costs, no additional money coming in. Allows rolled over dollars to be spent in this fiscal year. Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve OHA agreement number 169518.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agreement 169518 from Oregon Health Authority. Any final discussion? Hearing now proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Lake Health District ASA variation.
Tyson?
Ah, so pretty simple process. We're just renewing our variance for being able to staff an ALS ambulance with just a driver and a paramedic. Shouldn't happen more than maybe a dozen times a year because we have bumped our staffing away a bit. So we just need a letter of support to be able to send in with our application to the state.
So are you currently having issues with having qualified paramedics or do you see this could be a problem in the future?
No, not typically. This would be, for instance, if we had a super busy day where we had our main ambulance out, an ambulance going on a transfer and then had another ambulance call, or for instance, an ambulance call out Maydale. Would be the primary reasons we would utilize the variance. But for the most part, we have typically three or four on staff every day at the hospital, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Gotcha.
We have a draft of the support letter in front of us, pretty much exactly what we had last year.
Last year?
Yeah, just new dates and the new signatures.
That's all we need.
All right, sounds good. Do you have any other updates on the ASA and how things are going in number four?
Um, things are good. Our call volume's up, our aircraft transfers or flight transfers are continuing to decline because we're managing to take a lot more stuff by ground, which is great for the community because the bell knows it's about a tenth of wide is to fly somebody. And we're managing to get a lot of stuff going by ground to Bend and Klamath instead of having to fly to Portland or Boise or anything like that as well.
What is your workforce now generally?
Overall, I have four paramedics, two full-time intermediates, one part-time intermediate, and then five full-time basics, as well as myself.
That covers you seven days a week, 24 hours a day?
24/7, somebody's on staff at that ambulance station.
Excellent. Good deal.
Yep.
Please do.
No, please.
Any future projects or goals or...
Not that I can think of right now. We are looking into starting what they call the Mobile Integrated Health Program, or a community paramedic program, which kind of pairs up with home health and hospice to be able to provide the support to those folks that get discharged from the hospital, do medication reconciliation when they get home, help them with installing grab bars and such for the elderly, or wheelchair ramps, or stuff like that. And then we're doing a lot of mental health preparation courses as well to be able to assist the wellness center.
What's your normal shoot time?
Typically during the day, we're out the door in about two minutes from the time we're dispatched. At night, it's usually right about the same, somewhere between 3:00 and 4:00. Which is a significant decrease from the 15 to 20 that we used to have.
Good deal. Anything else?
Nothing, nothing. Very much appreciated, Tyson.
Appreciate what you do. Do we need, uh, that's just a signature? No vote? No consensus? We have consensus?
You do for me. Looks good.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Okay. We'll open up public comment? Any public comment? All right. Next on the list then would be sheriff patrol vehicle purchase.
So I prepared an overview for you guys to review. It's the lowest bid that we received is $45,194 from Hall Motor Company. The sheriff and I think we should accept this bid and order the three vehicles. Yesterday I misspoke and the county's buying one vehicle and the town is buying two. So, um, all the funding's accounted for though and we're all on the right page. It's just so wrong.
Okay.
So we're buying three total?
Three total.
Town's approved their side of it?
Yes.
We're approving one today?
Yes, and then one more for Deputy Tad when pricing's available in October, in October, for that vehicle.
Okay.
So should the motion include all three vehicles or should we separate those out? I mean, are we purchasing the two vehicles for the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we maintain our...
Yep.
All of their services for, please.
All right, all right. Just wanted to make sure it was square on that. I'm ready for a motion.
Good.
I, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of three sheriff patrol vehicles from Hall Motor for a fiscal impact of $45,194 per vehicle.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve three patrol vehicle purchases from homeowners with fiscal impact of $45,194 per vehicle. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we got a couple of OLCC permit ratifications. One is from Ranch Hand for a CC permit, Christmas Valley. It's actually gonna be coming up here, huh?
Mm-hmm.
The 5th? Two days? Okay. So, what do we do on our ratification again? We're just...
Approve.
Approving it?
Approving our ratification.
Can you sign these?
Yep.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead and, uh, should we approve them separately?
Yes, please.
I'll go ahead and approve the OLCC license for Ranch Hand.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the OLCC license for Ranch Hand. Any further discussion? Looks like this is for the Cascade Lakes Relay is what's going on.
Yeah. The event.
Event.
I was having trouble reading those dates. It's the only reason I didn't include it in my motion.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next one is put in by Amber LaPlante. Also, uh, it's, it's from, yep, Ken is it Northlake Wellness Center, Christmas Valley Foundation?
Yeah, that's the application name, but the event is the Christmas Valley Music Festival.
Okay, that'll be on the 20th of August.
Correct. I'll go ahead and move to approve the application from Amber LaPlante to the Northlake Wellness Center, DBA Christmas Valley Foundation for the Christmas Valley Music Festival on August 20th.
Commissioner Robertson, do you have a second?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Northlake Wellness Center, DBA Christmas Valley Foundation OLCC permit for the Christmas Valley Music Festival on August 20th, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up is the Third Amendment to the PSU contract, 929384.
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, a motion and a second to approve the Portland State University contract, number 929384, between PSU and Lake County. Discussion? You wanna just, do you mind, Melanie briefly restating what this is doing for us?
This is an amendment. All of the surveys are in for the demographic survey for the Christmas Valley Library District. And now they're going to compile the data to see if they qualify to meet the Community Development Block grant requirements for 51% or lower low-income rate. And then if they do, they'll move forward with their request to build a new building up.
Okay. All right, that's good for one year. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. At 10:30, we have our psilocybin opening discussion. Until then, we can approve meeting minutes?
I do have one other liaison update I can give you guys.
Okay, let's go to liaison update from Commissioner Williams.
Road Department has replaced several signs on some non-county maintained roads up in Christmas Valley. And we're trying to figure out how we pay for those. And with the cost of... There's, there's several ORSs prohibiting us, prohibiting us from using road dollars for non-county road issues. And a lot of these, several of these road signs were put up back in the day when the roads were originally named. If there's more than three people or three people that live on an individual road, they can apply for road naming, they get their road named, and then they get a sign usually put up for the initial cost. However, sometimes people get rather interesting names on their signs and people have a habit of either stealing them and absconding with them, or maybe it just gets damaged or hit or struck. But we get a lot of phone calls asking us to repair these signs and they're on unmaintained county roads. Now, several of these roads inter-county roadways. And for 911 emergency reasons, you know, we, Kevin and I were kind of talking, we decided let's go ahead and replace the signs, see what the actual cost is. And it costs about $200 to $300 per sign with new post, making the sign and everything else. So the question is, how do we pay for that? Right now, the Road Department is, and it makes sense that they are the ones that do the labor, but is... what dollars would be appropriate to use for that? That's, that's, I guess, is our question. Whether or not that comes to us. It's not appropriate that it go through the Planning Department. It's not appropriate that it go through building, even though those are typically the departments that get the initial phone calls and the Road Department itself. But those, the Planning Department typically only deals with the road naming and the initial signage of the road. But replacing the sign and ongoing maintenance really should not be falling to the Planning Department and their limited budget. But if it goes to the Road Department, dollars are restricted. So, um, kinda something for us to think about.
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, I mean, it could come out of general fund dollars through the Commissioner's approval. You know, is that way we can kind of monitor and see how many of these signs are actually issues. Being that a lot of the times the road naming comes to us to approve in the first place. Maybe if signs are continuously getting stolen because someone wants to have Butte Valley sign in their living room or in their bedroom or something, so they continue to steal it, maybe we need to rename the road. Those are things for our consideration. And there's a, it's a, it's a similar issue across the state. Other counties have the same problem. Over in Harney County, there's a road called Stairway to Heaven. And that sign gets stolen continuously. And they've talked about renaming it, never have. So, I don't know, maybe for monitoring purposes, maybe it comes to us for approval and we approve that expenditure out of our own budgets. So it doesn't just fall on the Road Department. It's something for consideration, not really. You know, it's something for us to think about. We don't have to make a decision today. Our Road Superintendent Kevin Hawke is, uh, is hoping to make it to our next meeting in two weeks where he has several updates and maybe at that point we can have more discussion. We can cite the individual ORSs that he feels are prohibiting him from expending road dollars. And we can have that talk. So, just a little update.
Okay. Did you have anything?
Yeah. What if you guys created a GL number in the Road Department's budget so they can maintain it, but then do a general transfer to that GL?
And we could do that. It's absolutely plausible. We talked about that, Kevin and I. But eventually it would, it would have to be some sort of a general fund allocation.
But we can do that each budget season?
Yeah, and just put it right into the Road Department's budget.
Commissioner Robertson, anything?
I think we should table it until we talk to Kevin when he comes in a couple of weeks.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other liaison updates? Okay, um, how about...
Melanie has one.
Do you want a department update?
Sure.
So I've been working with Airlink to possibly install a weather station in Christmas Valley. They've decided that the annex would be the best place to put it just to help prevent a future incident like the one we had a couple of months ago. So I've been working with Dave and we'll make sure they get the right AT support and we can provide that service to Airlink and most importantly, the community that they serve. So I will keep you in the loop. Um, I don't know. They hope to have this station up and going the next month or two, but there's no time established yet.
Good.
Okay, yeah, definitely keep us in the loop on that.
You good? There's no place out the airport?
Well, they need internet and power.
Copy. Okay. All right, how about approval of meeting minutes?
Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the combined session minutes from 7:20, 2022.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from 7:20, 2022 combined session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. All right, let's take a eight-minute break. And we will resume at exactly 10:30 for our discussion on psilocybin. All right, it's 10:30. We're gonna come back into session. And our discussion is gonna be on ordinance 2022-05C, which is the discussion on whether to put psilocybin, use of psilocybin in Lake County on the ballot for this fall. Um, last, last hearing, we read some things that had to do with it. I can read those again. Says unlike with the recreational marijuana program, counties are automatically opted into the psilocybin program. However, a governing body of a city or county may adopt ordinances to be referred to the electors of the city or county at the next statewide general election that prohibit the establishment of psilocybin production, cultivation, manufacturing, processing, or service centers. If a county or city takes no action, it is automatically opted into the program under the regulations established in Measure 109 and subsequent rulemaking. A client 21 years or older may purchase, possess, or consume a psilocybin product only at a psilocybin service center and only under the supervision of a psilocybin service facilitator. Counties may adopt reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. However, they cannot adopt separation distances that limit service centers greater than 1,000 feet from one another. The program requires counties to sign a land use compatibility statement that demonstrates that the requested license is for the land use that is allowable as a permitted or conditional use within the given zoning designation where the land is located. Uh, Measure 109, which was, uh, approved by the state of Oregon in 2020, was soundly defeated in Lake County with 2,955 noes and 1,209 yays. So we are open for hearing on that. Is there any discussion?
Do we have anyone online?
Okay, we have, uh, previous, uh, hearing, we, we heard several noes, or those of them who were opposed to it. We've had a couple of letters sent to us in opposition of it. Yeah, we did hear, um, uh, someone in support of it. So we've heard some. Generally, I think we've heard a lot of people without giving testimony very much opposed to it though.
Right. Usually conversations with people on the street or so forth, phone calls.
So what we're here to, assuming we're not gonna hear much more discussion on this, we're here deciding if we're going to allow this to be put on the ballot for the public to decide the fate of psilocybin in Lake County. Whether to allow it or not.
And again, I, you know, once the state were to make rules on it surrounding the prescription or how it would be prescribed if, if so appropriate, the town of Lakeview and the city of Paisley could, on their own initiative, put forward the allowance and lift the prohibition of it. But this would cover the unincorporated areas of the county.
We do have the draft ordinance, number 29, in relation to psilocybin. That was read, the last one. All right, well, without further ado, wasting anybody's time, we'll close the hearing on psilocybin discussion. And we need a consensus or a vote? Need a vote?
Place it directly on the ballot? Will this be the last hearing?
Believe this is the last hearing. We need to acquire, correct? Okay. Guys, entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to place the permanent prohibition of psilocybin-related businesses and, um, manufacturing on the ballot for November 2022.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to... Say that again?
For the, to place the, uh, the proposed ballot, um, currently in draft form for the permanent prohibition of psilocybin-related businesses and manufacturing on the ballot for November of 2022.
For Lake County. Okay, um, any further discussion?
I think we've all done a lot of research on this. We've done a lot of reading. I wanna thank, uh, our legal counsel, Paige, who has her hand raised, I see, on on here. I just wanted to thank Paige for the work that you've done and bringing this to, this to our attention. Uh, go ahead, Paige.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning commissioners. I sent over a resolution approving the ordinance and adopting the language for the ballot measure for preparation of the SEL document for your review and approval today if, uh, that's, if you want to place this on the ballot. Was, went over last, last Tuesday. I can send it again.
Oh, okay, maybe I did see that. So was that what you, you, we needed to pass, we need to pass the resolution also?
Yes, please. You need to adopt the resolution. And I, I didn't send it to the board. I sent it to Melanie. I probably shouldn't send it to everybody.
We got time. If you want to go, be out.
Yeah, we have time.
Do you guys want to recess a second?
Yeah, we'll go into recess.
Do you have it? Do you have it? I think I've seen a resolution.
Okay, we're going to come out of recess. So, Paige, we have a motion on the floor with a second, but should we consider striking that motion and, and read in this resolution?
I don't know that I would strike the motion, I would suggest perhaps you amend it to include approving the resolution and the language for placement on the ballot.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So we're, we have a motion and a second, and we're open for discussion.
Okay. Or an amended motion. Just want to read over this real quick. So, one of the things, Paige, I've noticed in with a lot of the different resolutions being passed around the state, some of them are just proposing a prohibition. This one is proposing a temporary prohibition. Can you explain maybe the difference on that?
Okay. The language on the form that the, the draft that I sent over is, proposes the ban, a permanent ban, unless I, unless I didn't take some, some language out. Because same resolution could be used for a ban or for a two-year moratorium. And you had to revise it based on the needs of your, your client. This draft that I sent over is for, should be for a resolution referring to the voters of Lake County, a measure proposing a ban. Caption, permanently prohibit psilocybin. So, does it indicate somewhere in there, did I miss a reference to a
Yeah.
moratorium?
It's, well, not a moratorium, but it, it does say a resolution, at the very top of the resolution, number 2022-05C, it says a resolution referring to the voters of Lake County, a measure proposing a temporary prohibition on psilocybin-related businesses and adopting ballot titles. Explanatory statement.
Okay, there must have been some kind of a break, that's not the resolution that I sent over, I, because I pulled up last week's email and I opened the attachment. So that may have been a preliminary one that I sent. On the 26th, I sent, it's, it's, I sent over a draft because I didn't know
Gotcha.
when your public hearings were, and, but it's for a permanent ban. So what I'm going to suggest you do is, other than that, it's probably the state, the form is the same.
Right.
I can resend it again, or I can email it to you right now if you have the ability to pull it up and review it.
Yeah, that's, either way is fine, reading down through it in, in several of the wherethis's, and at the bottom, it, it just, it talks about to permanently prohibit psilocybin-related businesses. So it might just be right in that initial title where it says temporary.
And a lot of my preliminary ones were, unfortunately, I had five clients adopting, adopting this measure. But a number of them have different different provisions for how they adopt ordinances. And of course, everybody was on a super short timeline, so
Right.
some of the documents didn't, didn't get updated and revised. But let me send you this one. And you can adopt the, the resolution with the instruction that I changed the caption.
Perfect. Thank you for that, Paige. With that, I'll go ahead and I'll amend my original motion to include passing a resolution and adopting, adopting a resolution, number 2022-05C, a resolution referring to the voters of Lake County, a measure proposing a permanent prohibition of psilocybin-related businesses and adopting a ballot title and explanatory statement. And furthermore, including the language that we that our legal counsel advises and is going to change with some of those amendments from the draft in front of us. Hopefully, it's coherent enough.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to amend the main motion to include Resolution Number 2022-05C, which refers to the voters of Lake County, a measure proposing a permanent prohibition on psilocybin-related businesses and adopting a ballot title and explanatory statement. Any further discussion on that?
Maybe just, you know, with the final review of what legal counsel sends to us, this will be adopted.
Okay. I think everything looks good except for that title there. There, there was one. Everything else says permanent within the document.
Correct.
Not the resolution that I can see.
Agreed.
Okay. Hearing, no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the amended motion that includes Resolution 22, 2022-05C that puts, refers to the voters of Lake County, a measure proposing the permanent prohibition on psilocybin-related businesses and adopting a ballot title and explanatory statement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. That will be sent to the clerk's office. We'll get that on the November ballot. Any other business today? All right. Everything's closed. We'll go ahead and close our meeting at 10:48. Means adjourn.